All right, okay, thank you. Comments and concerns? Anybody have a comment?
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask Sue right here.
I was just looking for an update if you had any luck contacting FedEx regarding the information I had given to, well, that's what he gave us. So, just wondering if there was any updates or not. No, there's, yeah.
The answer is no, right? I doubt you were answering that.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman. The information was given to me and I have no problem.
Okay, just a minute. Sir, will you, would you come down in front, please?
Is it okay if I stand?
No, I don't like.
I have sciatic in my leg after standing.
Huh?
I have sciatic in my leg.
Can you stand right here? Because I'd like to hear everything you say, sir.
I have a question for Mr. Delanty regarding the open meeting violation. I was here at 6:00, okay? And you were standing right there between the two cops. And I asked you if I could come in. Do you remember that?
No.
You were wearing a brown sweater. No, no, not that one.
All right. Is that your question?
So, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna say I'm lying. Because you were standing right there. I came in the door and I asked you if I could enter the meeting and you said no.
You didn't see me.
You were standing right there, sir.
Didn't see me.
Okay.
This is the sweater I have.
Now, I have a comment to the taxpayers of this town, okay? Your money's being wasted by these people. I want you to understand that. I'm here for the taxpayer, sir. And you just lied to me. You were standing right there. Right where the chief is, that's where you were standing. And you're gonna lie, you're gonna lie to me?
Not gonna lie to him.
You violated the open meeting law. You were standing right there. It wasn't posted to be a private meeting, okay? You're lying, you're lying to this town and I want the taxpayers to understand. I'm here for the taxpayers, not to play your games.
All right, all right. Is that your question?
You know what? I would normally say nothing. First of all.
He lied.
I didn't even get here.
Will you let him talk, please?
Well, you just asked me a question.
I didn't get here till quarter after six.
No, I didn't ask you. You just did.
I asked you if you were done. Did you answer that question? Are you done? You asked him a question.
No, no, I left a comment somewhere.
All right, let him respond, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Number one, I didn't get here till quarter after six. Number two, the police chief was in the room when I was in the room. Did I change clothes? Not today.
It's the same brown sweater that you were wearing at the meeting and it's on the internet, okay? The people in this town, am I on camera? I'm here for the taxpayers. They can decide who's telling the truth, me or this guy.
How do we know you're telling the truth, Brian? You don't, you recall that day?
You wouldn't even know what the truth is, so what kind of question is that?
All right, you're done. That's it. You've asked your question, your time's up.
I'm here for the taxpayer. I want you to understand. And you people are lying. You violated the law.
Mr. Tervoll, you're out of order. I've asked you to be quiet. You're done, all right? Now, if you can't comply with my.
You're a liar too, sir.
Will you escort him on this road, please?
You don't have to throw me out. I'm leaving. Do not put your hands on me.
Hey.
Do not put your hands on me.
I'm here for the taxpayer, okay? You're out of this room, sir. Any other comments and concerns? All right, let's proceed with the correspondence, Mr. Levais.
Correspondence from Superintendent General Pace regarding the board members. The Patfonders' annual budget meeting to be held Wednesday, March 12th at 7:00 p.m. at RSPB by March 3rd. And amendment memorandum from Planning Board. They will be holding an informational meeting on proposed amendment to the zoning bylaws regarding medical marijuana dispensaries. Meeting is Wednesday, February 26th at 6:30 p.m. in the Selectman's Meeting Room. The Planning Board anticipates there will be an article on the annual town meeting warrant in May. That would be it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With regard to that first item in correspondence for the meeting, the annual budget meeting for Patfonder, would any of the gentlemen who'd be attending now?
Well, I know, I will. And Mr. Delansky normally goes and Sue Como goes. You're going?
Well, yeah, because they have the best food.
And, uh, Mr. Levais.
We'll all be there.
Yeah.
It's okay to our speaker.
I brought those strawberries.
Yes.
Hey, Sue, cut me a little slack, please.
What?
Cut me a little slack.
Cut me a little slack. I won't tell your wife about all the snacks you get.
Thank you.
Well, you didn't hear that, right?
Yes. Is that it? For correspondence?
Yes.
Okay. We have a hearing. All right, I think we can go with appointments, reappointments to the Veterans Council and Decorating Committee. And you have that, Mr. Levais?
Nope. In your book? In my book. I know that. Um, let's see, Veterans Council, we'd like to make a motion to reappoint Ruth Isaac, Alain Norman, Judy Rice, and Lloyd A. Rice for two years apiece.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Make a motion, we reappoint Jane Day McKean to the Decorating Committee for two years.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, let's do the Treasury warrants. Treasury warrants, folks, merely means we're paying our bills, all right? That's what we're signing here today. We're paying our bills.
Make a motion, we accept payroll number 85, uh, warrant number 85 from payroll of the amount of $34,360.56.
Second. Okay, I have a motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Make a motion, accept warrant number 86, the amount of $168, excuse me, $1,000, $100,068.942.42. That number's way too big.
It's $168,000.
Yep, and $68,942.31.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion, we accept warrant number 87, which is payroll, the amount of $45,508.38.
Second. Okay, I have a motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Make a motion, we accept warrant number 88, the amount of $81,724.65.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we can do the minutes.
Make a motion, we accept minutes from January 21st, 2014, February 4th, 2014.
Second. Okay, I have a motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Make a motion, we accept minutes from February 11th, when there was only the two of us, 2014. So, you'll have the second hour.
Okay, that was you and me, right?
Yep.
Yes, I got, okay. I signed a motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Extension one. I had to abstain.
Yes, one upstanding. Forgot to warn you. Okay. We still got some time, so I'm gonna give you some time. Lorena?
Good evening, gentlemen. Just following up on some matters from a prior meeting. The mutual aid agreement that was discussed at two meetings ago, it was a meeting, excuse me, it was an agreement sponsored by the Worcester Chiefs Association, excuse me, the Police Chiefs Association and the city of Worcester. That mutual aid agreement has been sent to town council. I received back an email that they confirm receipt of that and they will review that and offer an opinion in the near future. Secondly, the TIF agreement that was a subject of congress, of discussion at the last meeting was also sent to town council. They have advised our office to forward a copy of said agreement over to the Board of Assessors for their review of their records on what has been done to date. The Board of Assessors has responded to me that they will offer a response to this board following the regularly scheduled meeting, which is this coming Thursday. So, those findings will be available at the next quarter Selectman meeting.
Okay, you got that, Dana?
Yep.
Yep. All right.
There is one item that came through an email this morning. I don't know if the board wishes to entertain it at this point. It is from Hampshire Council of Governments. It is Hampshire Supply. They provide our electrical service. It's part two of our electrical billing for the town. It is a contract to lower our kilowatt hour rate, more of a fixed cost type of thing versus a spot market rate now. So, the board may choose to table that and review the contract and discuss it.
Well, let me make a comment on. We just got that mail today. Now, I read it. Mr. Levais, you're leaving tomorrow. Have you read that letter?
No.
You have not read that letter. And I know you haven't had time to read it. But time is of the essence there. They give us a window, didn't they? To respond to that, to make sure we can get that.
They suggested how we think about it relatively quickly.
So, I would recommend, David, that you take a look at that firsthand and if the matter is urgent, you may have to act on that in Mr. Levais' absence. I don't know. I hope not, but we may tomorrow. But the bottom line is electricity's going up and it's going up dramatically considering all the solar energy things coming on board, you know? It's unbelievable. But they're cutting down, shutting down. A lot of old equipment that's generating electricity with no replacement. So, electricity's gonna become at a premium again and the prices are gonna soar. Unbelievable. All right, so we're looking at, to find some way of maintaining our present cost or somewhat near our present cost. All right, you have anything else, Lorena?
That is all I have for you, Chairman.
Mr. Levais, we got a couple of minutes. You got anything you want to discuss?
No, but I will come in tomorrow morning before I go and read that agreement.
You got time? Yeah, give us, give you us your feeling. If we have a consensus on it, maybe we could go ahead and move on that in your absence. I wouldn't want to move unless we had to. All right? Thank you. Mr. Delansky, a couple of minutes and I know you prefer not to talk. All right, we have a hearing scheduled for 7:15. Not quite 7:15. Mr. Burrell?
Yes.
I think the time you get wound up and stand up and everything will be 7:15.
Let's ask a quick question. Did you get an email from Highway regarding salaries?
Yes, that was going to be introduced in our budget discussion.
Is it something you want to discuss now or later?
Excuse me, Mr. Burrell, one second.
No, that's fine.
The documents she's talking about, we will discuss in our budget discussions.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, Mr. Burrell?
Sorry if I sit here, is that okay?
No, I don't want you to sit there.
Okay, will you stand over there?
Yeah, I want you to sit there. I want you to face us, all right?
Okay.
Like I say, you're talking to this board. You're not talking to an audience. All right?
As you can see, I do have a lot of handouts. I think what I'll do is I'll give you, it's probably easier for me to speak rather than having you go through the handout as I'm speaking and I'll just give you the handout at the end if that sounds like a plan.
Well, I prefer you hand them out at the end, but hey.
Okay.
That's my.
Right, yeah, because I think it might take a little longer if I, I'm not gonna go through every single page.
No, hey, you're gonna be limited how much time I'm giving you. You know that. I told you that before, I think.
Right, correct, yeah. I'm gonna basically try and get done in 10 minutes.
Five minutes per subject, if we go that long.
Right, yeah, yeah.
All right?
Okay. All right. So, basically, so I have this all in a particular order. So, I'm here to speak, the first thing is public records, which is gonna involve a couple various different things. So, basically, I've done some public records requests here to the town. This first packet, which I'm gonna hand to you, is my ties to Warren. It talks about me and the nonprofit organization and what we've, you know, tried to do for the town. So, I'll just quickly skip over that.
Now, clarify that, you're, who's the nonprofit organization?
Uh, yeah, the nonprofit organization is Central Mass Public Safety Association.
Okay, and that's what you're affiliated with?
Yes, correct, yes.
Or is that you?
Well, I'm the executive director, manager.
You're the executive director?
Yes, yeah, yeah. There's a board of directors that is in charge, you know, the president, vice president, so forth. Okay, so moving right along, just to, so what I'm doing, I'm just gonna skip through a bunch of this and you can just review it later, but I'm just, so the public records that I'm gonna be giving to you, these records are all the way from 2008 to current day. And some of these 2008 records are emails back and forth between myself and the Selectman, some of it which was to Souza. One thing was, is I applied several times through the Casino Study Committee, a letter of interest for that. I also applied for the, for the, another committee that's in here. But anyhow, back a couple of years ago, or 2011, I wrote Mr. Downing a letter asking to be put on the agenda to discuss some of the, some concerns that I had. And it turns out the town wrote me a letter in 2011, basically, so I was, I just wanted to discuss this briefly. So, I had sent an email to Souza and an email to you. And it was about a bunch of different things. Some issues were issues with the police department, an issue with the police dispatcher, an issue with Bill Ramsey, basically just stuff that I thought was some inappropriate stuff that was going on behind the scenes. So, you guys had, all three had signed a letter to me back in June 23, 2011, basically saying that you received my complaints, but it turns out I hadn't actually complained yet because it was just an email just saying I just wanted to, you know, sit down and officially talk. One of the concerns that I now have over these record issues is obviously now that I have the town council bills, there are things, the picture seems to be much clearer to me. So, on that issue where you wrote me the letter, I found the town council bill that talks about where the chief of police was able to get access to town council to have consultations. And then there was also consultations between the board of selectmen and town council. Now, just from me sending you an email, the town council bills for those two items total over $660.
Now, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
The information you've got there, does that specifically say we council, we talked with town council, reference to your memo?
Right here, it says, "Police- review complaints against the police department and review other complaints. Police telephone conference with chief of police regarding citizens complaint."
Other complaints, other complaints, not specifically you, right?
And then this one was, "Police draft email to board of selectmen regarding the investigation of the citizens complaint. Telephone conference with administrative assistant regarding complainant. Review letter from administrative assistant regarding public document requests. Analyze documents requested. Police draft an email to administrative assistant for an internal investigation. Police telephone conference with chairman of the board of selectmen and other board of selectmen regarding police internal investigation and the research and draft opinion to letter of board of selectmen regarding public records request."
And what date are we talking about?
These town council bills, May of 2011 and June of 2011.
Okay.
So.
All right, so now you're at the last page here. What's the, summarize for me, what your concern is in that whole thing? What is your concern?
Well, I, well, my concern is that the stuff I'm going through here today, I feel that I've been harassed by certain people in town. And these records, at the time, the board of selectmen people were, you, Mr. Downing, Mr. Delansky, Mr. Souza. And all these records, including some of the new records that I have, all go from 2008 to present day. And I've had all sorts of issues. I've, you know, what I'm upset at is, is I reported to the town back in 2008, 2009, 2010, issues that there were problems at the police department, there were problems over here, I was being harassed by Bill Ramsey. I had a, yes.
You can't say names.
Okay. So, I was being harassed by townspeople, some our employees, and nobody did nothing about it. And, you know, like the Casino Study Committee, I applied five times for that. And when I mailed it to the Selectman, which is the same three Selectmen, it was signed for, but I'll three U various times. And nobody ever wrote me a letter back saying, "What's going on?" I just felt like I was ignored and I feel that was very inappropriate.
Let me ask you.
Yeah.
Are you, are you a resident of this town?
Am I officially residing here? No.
No, you're not a resident of this town. Well, I would assume, because you weren't a resident of this town, that's why you weren't considered for any committees, okay?
I don't know.
Now, I don't recall ever getting any correspondence from you myself.
Right, right.
All right?
Yeah.
But hey, let me tell you something.
Yeah.
We have enough problems with current history. Why are we going back to 2008? And I'm gonna summarize this for you because I think we're gonna bring this to a halt. Is this the gist of your whole thing tonight? You think you were viewed since 2008, '07 by certain individuals and the Select Board did nothing about it? Is that it? In a nutshell?
Well, that's.
We have to summarize, sir.
Right, no, I understand, yeah.
Is that it?
I would say there'd be a small percentage of it. But the other thing that I have to discuss is a few of the town council bills and spending of money, which is part of the public records that I'm here to talk about tonight.
All right. We're not gonna talk about.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to make this as quick as possible. I know there's a large stack of paper, but I'm hoping to go through.
Yeah, it's scary because, you know, we have a lot of business to take care of and you're talking history. And what I think you're talking about is a civil matter to begin with, all right? Because you have a complaint against certain people within the town?
No, no, there's never been any complaints against anybody.
Against anybody? So, what the hell are we talking about, sir?
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'd certainly like to know the answer. These are, these are some Oxford's police records, sorry, Warren's police records that I just got the other day. And here is the record that I explained to the Selectman for where Chief Spakowsky had banned me from the police station. Because him and I got in an argument because he was upset that he received a violation from the state agency, that he had missed, that somebody allegedly had misused the police computer running my information out.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt? I can say that that complaint has been addressed and cleared also through town council and there was no basis for his complaint. So, that's already been asked and answered years ago.
All right, thank you. See what I mean? You're talking about a lot of things here.
Right.
Erroneous, you know, no, the non-erroneous.
Because what I did find in the recent police records is, which, which kind of surprised me, is that there are certain things that like when I drive through town, like here's a, here's a police instance where they said me driving on Old Westbrook Field Road was a suspicious vehicle.
Wait a minute, okay, wait a minute. I'm not saying your complaints are right or wrong because I don't know, okay? But any complaint you have against any department?
Yeah.
Has to be taken to the department head first officially, has to be an official complaint?
Yeah.
Taken to the department head first. And then, if you're not satisfied with what happens at the department head, excuse me, you can then appeal it. But I will say one other thing. If you look at all the town, the town bylaws and how things are handled, you only have 30 days to complain. If you make a complaint and it's after 30 days, this board can't hear it.
Right.
So, anything that you're talking so far, we can't hear.
Well, I'm not actually complaining. I'm just, I'm just discussing it as part of public records.
But you have, you have to go to the police chief first. If you're gonna complain about the police chief, you have to go to the police chief first, okay?
Well, I've already, I mean, interrupted, but I have, the chief and I don't get along.
I understand that.
And, and, and I have police reports that I've tried to go to the chief and it's documented in the town and nothing's happened.
If you can make a written, if you can make a written complaint at any time to, to the police chief, it has to be written. If you don't make a written complaint at any time within that 30-day time period, this board can't hear it because of what, how it's all drawn up for the, for the different departments. And it's not just the police department, excuse me, it's, it's also for any department. You only have 30 days to make a complaint. So, if you can't talk to this board, you can't even, you can't come before the cameras and say anything about a complaint that wasn't made officially first to them, so, to the, to the police chief.
Yeah.
So, we don't even have the right to hear what you're saying.
Well, that's where I'm confused because you wrote me a letter.
I wrote you a letter?
All three of you did, all three of you signed it. And you said, "This is, this is, we received your complaint." And I have the email that I sent to Susan, the board of selectmen email, and it was just a generic email. So, somebody mistook it that I was complaining when I said I don't want to complain. And it's actually in the email that I sent to the board three, two or three times during that timeframe.
Okay.
But, but the letter that was sent to me says, "Here's the answer of your complaint." And it said, and it basically said, "Please tell us who the people are that are involved. We may research it further. We can put this in executive session." And I wrote back an email saying, "You wrote me a letter saying, 'Here's the basis to your complaint.'" And I said, "If you read the email," I says, "I'm not even complaining. I just wanted to have a discussion about it." But, but no discussion happened and, you know, now that there's, you know, now there's issues that haven't been resolved or some past things.
Again, I'm not taking a, I'm not taking a side.
Right, oh, I understand.
And, but the problem is, is we don't have the right to do it. We don't have the right to let you come in here and talk about something that happened a couple of years ago. We don't have the right to let you come in here and talk about something until you have a complaint. And you just admitted you didn't have one. Maybe it was a mistake made to write back, but you have to have that complaint. It has to go to department head first. If you're not happy with what happened at any department head, not just the police, you then have the right to take it before the board of selectmen. But it has to be a written complaint, go to the department head, and if you're not happy with that department head, excuse me, then you can come before the board. But it all has to, the first, the first written complaint has to happen within 30 days. So, we don't have the right to hear any of this so far. And again, I'm not, I'm not saying something did happen. I'm not saying something I didn't understand. But we can't hear that.
Right. But the issue is if I were to file a complaint, I'm talking about multiple sets of people. I mean, I would have to write, you know, four or five different complaints to different people. And the issue over the name I mentioned before that you didn't want me to say, I mean.
But we can't say names because that person has the right to be here.
But I mean, that name that I mentioned before, he's on a, on a board. So he doesn't, his supervisor would be the three of you.
Planning board is a, an elected board. We're not their supervisors. We have to remember.
But I mean, somebody's in charge of the people on there because they're representatives of the town.
The members of the planning board are in charge of that. So if you had a complaint, you could take it before the planning board. This is.
Right, but it's a personal complaint. It's not, it's not a, it's a, it's a personal complaint against an individual. It's not, it's not a matter.
Again, I understand that. The problem becomes though is if it's an elected board, the only people that can hear that, the complaint against a person, or if you could take, if it's a complaint, the, the problem becomes, again, has to be done within 30 days, has to go before their board. And then if you're not happy with that, it can come before the board of selectmen. But it has to be done that way. Once that 30 day passes, even if you were right, okay, and I'm not saying you're right or wrong.
Right.
But even if you were right, we have no right to hear it. Again, elected board. The board has no control over an elected board. Elected board, and that's caused us some problems in the past. But the board has no control over an elected board. They're elected, we're elected. Granted, we have some, we have control over finances and some other things. But we don't have control over telling a, an elected board member what to do.
Right, yeah. Uh, if I could just mention one thing, just to go back to the records for, records request request. So, so on December 31st, I did a records request for some police records from the police department. And it turns out the two town council bills have two charges that seems a little suspicious to me. There's one charge of three, uh, this is town council bills, December 31st, 2013. Basically, there were telephone calls regarding the records request that I submitted. And there were 18.3 hours used, which that bill, just those items totaled $3,019.
I can tell you exactly.
On this other page then says telephone conference of chief of police regarding public records requests. It does another $970.50. So 39, so $3,927 was spent on, I just don't understand that because I mail in a records request and you spent $3,900 to talk to town council.
The problem is, it wasn't just to talk to town council. The problem becomes this. When somebody sends in a rec, a records request and it could have something to do with health, it could have something to do with everything else. So if you ask, excuse me, if you ask for, for minutes of a board of selectmen meeting or, or for the police department, we have to have town council go through every single bill that, that we, and all the thing, everything that happened. Because you have to redact something if it's illegal for us to give out. Now, the problem was, and I remember, if it cost us $3,900, I'm not, I'm using your figure. If it cost us $3,900 to have her go through that, consider it lucky that we didn't say that's what it was going to cost to have the, to have the records done. Because we had to have town council go through every single bill to make sure there was nothing in here that we gave out. So anything that got, anything that got redacted, we had to make sure that we did it the right way. Police chief the same way.
Right.
The police chief called and maybe asked the board of selectmen if they could go to town council. The board said, sure, find out what you have to do to make sure we do it legally. We want to do everything legally everywhere we possibly can. So a lot of the times that cost is from, if they have to go through records and look at them and see what has to be redacted. In case everybody's wondering what redacted is, crossed out. Okay, if it's something pertaining to health or if it's something pertaining to things that can't be given out, that has to be redacted so it can't be seen, it has to be crossed out so that it can't be seen. Hence the reason you go through every single line of every single page and so forth and it could possibly get expensive. But that's, that would be the reason on those two.
But the only comments I have to that is, is, is I do have the town council, because I actually did a public records request for town council bills. And it turns out, uh, it was told to me, because I wanted the records from upstairs from Madeline's office. And then Madeline had said, oh no, the town council's going to reprint you the bills from her office. And I said, okay. So I wasn't, I was just making sure what set of paperwork I get. So, so I, so Lorena did give me that set of papers and they were reprints because there's no writing on them stamped paid or whatever, what account number, whatever. But I don't know, I guess what confused me, I don't have that paper right printing. But, but town council charged $2,400 for her to reprint those bills to give to me. Because I found the bill that says that she had to process my request and print it. So, so I mean, as a taxpayer here and everybody else, I mean, I, so why would, why would town council charge 20, town, charge the town $2,400 for, for her to process the request for the town?
Remember.
She could have just printed them and it shouldn't have happened.
It wasn't just because they printed it. It was because they had to go through and read every single page to make sure.
That's right. There's confidential material there. Well, I. That claims to other people other than you that we can't destroy their confidentiality. But Mr. Burrow.
I, I understand that. But it turned out she didn't redact anything. Everything was there. Because I, I was waiting to get the bill and say, maybe something's redacted and there wasn't nothing redacted.
But she had to go through everything, I think.
Right.
She had to reset.
Maybe she.
I don't know how many, I don't.
You're missing the point. She has to go through everything. So you're paying.
I, I understand it.
Aren't you ashamed though? Look at the time you wasted. This town, the people, yes, you know you have. You tell me, you got no complaint. You have no complaint. You just want to bring all the history forward to let us know something that you don't like, all right?
I'm not saying I don't like.
And there's no outcome to this. There is no outcome to this, sir. But I personally, personally.
Right.
I think you owe this town an apology. And based on my feeling about that, we're going to bring this to a halt because there's no, uh, there's no positive outcome to what you're talking about tonight.
But I submitted an agenda request and you approved it.
I gave you five minutes and look at the time, see?
It wasn't five minutes. There's two.
I gave you five minutes for each, each agenda item. I said that at the very beginning. I got a whole bunch of people on there. I heard that.
All right, so I just, so let me go on my very last thing, which is with the, the community access.
You'll take another 20 minutes?
No, no, this is just one simple packet.
You want to let him go?
Go ahead.
You really? I, I'm not, I'm not.
Five minutes, Mr. Burrow.
I'm not trying to be mean, just, just. Okay, regarding the community access TV. I had done a records request for the videotape from 12/23. And I discussed this with you, Mr. Downing, already. Basically, to, to get a, a tape is $15, okay? So after talking to Igor, there was some discussion whether he actually had the tape still or not. He was able to locate the tape and get me the tape. So that was $15. The only thing I, I would like to share is that there's no need to, if somebody wants a tape, there's no need to send a certified return receipt because I paid $15 and you spent $772. So I would, you know, I told him I'd pick it up. So I don't know, you know, so I'm just trying to help save money. The next thing was I asked for the Tuesday 1/714 tape. And that I still don't have. And as you know, the records law says you have 10 days and Igor still hasn't processed that yet. But what I wanted to talk about, which Mr. Downing and I had a discussion about, was that what happened the first time is on the December 23 meeting, one of these cameras had a cassette tape in it. And when I asked Igor about if I could have, you know, to make me a copy of the video, he, the master recording system or whatever, didn't record nothing. So he says, I don't have the video footage. And I just, how, how can you not have the video footage? It's five days after the meeting was there. So he found out that the camera actually had a tape in it. And he just copied the tape and that's the tape I got. On the other two instances, for my other two requests, no tapes were put in the cameras. And now he's claiming, which I guess is true, is that this master recording device computer or whatever, those videos are on that device. And then he had said, I can, I can get that off, but the price is now going to be $50. And I said, well, wait a second. And I says, your, the town's website says $15 for a tape and I have no problem paying that. And he said, well, because it's going to take longer and I have to take it off the hard drive, I have to pay 50. So I says, okay, fine. So I wrote him a check for the, for $35 to make the $50 of 50. And then the next DVD tape, which was for the meeting for February 4th, which was just a few weeks ago. And I sent $15 there and, oh, I don't have a tape, so it's going to be $50. So one of the things that I would hand you that I discussed with you, Mr. Downing, is, is you wanted a copy of his website that shows, you know, all the pricing and everything on there and so forth. And, um, and so it's on there. So my concern over the whole thing is that I, I feel that it's inappropriate to charge $50. Because what I, what I just proved to, to the three of you is if you put a tape in the camera, you can easily make that tape and charge you $15. If there's no tape in the camera, then he says, well, because there was no tape in the camera, it's now $50. So I just said, okay.
I, I get your point.
So I just said, well, why don't you put it?
And you use eight minutes instead of five, all right?
Well, I apologize.
Let me, let me say this, okay?
So I'm just, you know, trying to understand the price of.
This is what you have to do.
Yes, sure.
The keeper of the records, the keeper of the records for the police department is the police department. The keeper of the records for cable television is the cable television committee.
Right.
The board of selectmen a long time ago said, we want nothing to do with, I just won't say nothing. Want very little to do with the, with the cable television committee because we wanted it to run independently. So I guess the complaint should go to cable television because there's the keeper of the records. The same thing, if you have a complaint about any other records, you go to the person who happens to be the, the custodian of the, of the records.
Right, yeah.
So if you have a complaint, the board of selection can't do anything. You have to go to the cable television commission or the police or whatever, whatever board that those people are on.
Right.
Because the board, it's, it's done by the custodian of the records. If, if you're not happy with what they have to say, there must be other steps you can take. I don't know. But I know that that's the answer to any, any records. The board takes care of theirs.
Right, yeah. I understand. The, the community access TV.
I think you got two people that want to say something.
Yeah, just, the community access TV, do they report to the board of selectmen?
Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Very, very.
Igor wants to.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that he was there. Okay, sure.
Let's listen to Igor.
I just want to answer a few of your questions.
No, I appreciate, yeah, thank you.
Did we have a gentleman's agreement that we agreed that we install a brand new piece of equipment? So we'd be capable of recording selectmen's meeting and you were willing to wait for it when it's installed?
Right, right.
Did you say, yes, that's fine for that time?
I, I, I did say that, yes, yes.
But it answers the allegation that you didn't want to supply for it right there.
Okay, I know that Igor.
So we, so you shouldn't ever bring something on the meeting and accusing someone of not doing the, something for you, which you requested it when you had an agreement that I'm willing to wait when this equipment is installed. And I told you personally and we told you, you will get those tapes, so DVDs, no problem.
But I understand you did say it might be a little while.
So why are you ringing it? I don't understand.
Because I'm a little confused by what the conversation was, that's all.
How, what is there to be confused? If you agree, you says, I'm willing to wait till you install the equipment and then you're going to give me those DVDs?
No, I, I understand that.
What's there to hard to understand? What's confusing there?
The simple question is if you put it, if you put a tape in the camera now, then you can give me the tape and I can pay $15. I don't understand why, why the first time you said I accidentally put a tape in the camera, it's $15, and now there's no tape in the camera and I have to pay 50.
And I explained to you why we don't do that. And you don't know the why.
You have that discussion, like, I mean, we have other things.
We're done, okay? And I, I want to tell you another thing. We will never again address this problem that you have, this history because, okay, you may have the time to go back in to 2007. For some reason or another, I think you're a gentleman, you've been hurt and you can't get away from that era, okay? I think you ought to try harder. But hey, this board has done everything it's going to do to help you resolve your inner problems, okay? The demons you're working with.
Well, that's another question.
And then the future, I will not.
Yeah.
Okay, we're done tonight. Thank you very much.
If I were to come, sorry, interrupt. If I were to come to the board at a future time and saying, can you help me fix some of my problems? Is that something that you're willing to do? Doesn't have to be a meeting, but you know, we just sit down privately and say.
We'll do whatever we can here. We're here for everybody in this town, okay? But our residents and the residents' agendas come first, all right?
Right.
So you may have to wait sometime. But for some feel, you feel like you're harassed and persecuted. I don't find that, okay? And I haven't found that to be the case. I think you, I think you ought to find a way to get past it. You have so much to do and you have so much energy to do it. You could spend your wealth, spend your time doing something much better than what you've been doing. Chasing history, no advantage to you.
Right.
Or us. It's a waste of time. Like I said, my personal feeling is I think you owe our town an apology for the use of all the facilities. The time when we could have been doing something else and need to be doing something. We're a poor town and we can't afford to pay the cost that you've, you've caused us to do your.
I think it's time to close it.
That's it. We're done.
That's it.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep, the only other thing I have to say is these records are actually on the internet and the videos are actually on YouTube as well, so.
All right, folks, well, before we leave.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, all right. To end this, whatever this experience we've been going through here, I want to make, uh, there are two items that, uh, while these two items I want to address, to put it this way, is not open for discussion. They're for informational purposes only. And in February, February 20th played by Current in an article involving the board of selectmen, it was reported that a postal receipt was presented to the board of selectmen. I would like to take the honor, this opportunity to set the record straight. The receipt referred and the published in the article is in fact, not the material, presented to the selectmen. And that was the one, everybody saw the picture in the paper? The paper said that was presented to us. That's not the case. Copies of the material that was presented can be provided upon, on request. There's other things I'd like to dispel. There's rumors circulating that a contract with Comcast has been signed. This rumor is incorrect. The board of selectmen has not reached an agreement with Comcast on its license renewal, which expired on December 31st, 2013. And additionally, to dispel any further rumors, the license renewal with Comcast does not provide for any discussion or negotiation for pricing or channel lineup. And there's people out there that think we have the opportunity to do that. That's not the case. And that's all I have to say is no discussion. At this time, we're going to revert to our agenda for the evening. Other business, Mr. Zalanski, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Not this week.
All right, our next meeting date is going to be, uh.
Mr. Downing?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Do you have something?
Budget discussion.
We skipped right over a bunch of discussions.
Oh. What did I miss there? Son of a gun.
Number seven.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Are there coffees in here or?
Right here.
Let me see. You want me to read this, uh, let's see. How about this one from Tom? This just came. February 20th.
That was.
Sue, you're, you're aware of Tom's memo about the deficit spending?
That's correct. I wanted to make sure you guys brought it up tonight if you're going to vote on it to okay him to do that because we are meeting Thursday and we will also vote on it for Thursday.
All right, so let me, so because of everybody wondering what we're talking about, let me read this. This is a letter from Thomas Boudreaux, our Warren Highway Surveyor, and he's saying, ladies and gentlemen, according to my records, I have spent about $130,579.17 of the $134,560 appropriated budget, appropriated budget for the removal of snow and ice, leaving me in balance of $3,980.83. I currently have outstanding invoices totaling more than $3,980.83. Therefore, I am requesting your permission to deficit spend. At the current time, I should have enough salt to get through the remainder of the year. I may or may not have enough sand and would like to purchase additional 100 yards or more at $975 a yard. Is that a yard?
Yep.
To be prepared.
It's a hundred yards.
A hundred yards, a hundred yards or more at 900. I was going to say, boy, that's expensive. I have yet to be billed for several storms from current contractor's house. Okay, that's the item you want us to vote on tonight? Sue?
I'm sorry.
You want us to vote on this deficit spending tonight?
Well, we have to give him official approval that it's okay for him to do so.
Okay, all right.
I don't, yeah, I only have one question. The board votes on it and the finance committee has to vote on it also.
That's correct.
I only have one question. If we vote on it tonight, could you just double check if we purchase an additional 100 yards of, does he really need to do that or can he get through without purchasing it? I think that's my only question.
All right, I could call him tomorrow because I want to talk to him.
That, that's my only question. If he thinks he can get through without purchasing it, let's not purchase it. Okay, other than that, I would move that we allow the highway superintendent to deficit spend with the approval of the finance committee with that one question.
Yeah, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion second. Any discussion?
Yes. Is he going to be allowed to buy the sand if he runs out of sand and he needs it?
Oh, yeah.
By it right away?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because he'll, we've given him permission.
The question pertains.
I just don't want him to run out of sand and then I'd have to wait like a week to get to live it or, you know, and not have sand to do it if I need it.
If we give him permission to deficit spend, he can spend it. Okay, it's, my only question was if he thinks he's going to have enough, let's not do it. And if he needs it later, buy it.
All right, really, but I don't really want him to run out of sand.
Neither do I. Neither do I.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And we've had a discussion. Any further discussion? Harry, not all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have approval to do that. All right. Okay, we all have the same packet. We got, uh.
The planning board is level funded except for the, a step increase, which we have to do because it's, that's town bylaw. I have no problem with the planning board.
Neither do I.
Okay, and I have a motion. Are there any?
Let's, let's wait until we end here. And we have the town planner and town planner expense. That should be level funded. We have the veterans agent, which I would level fund. We have parks and rep, which I would level fund.
Veterans agent, I mean, do we know how many people he, he is still servicing?
I, I don't know.
Is there any adjustment on that?[1743.05] Because that's, I mean, that's a huge bill.
He had, what, eighty?
He was up to like sixty-three hundred dollars a month for the families that he was servicing. But I know, last I spoke to him, I mean, some of those people, he was trying to put onto the federal
Yeah.
roles versus the town of Warren, so I haven't spoken to him recently.
Well, I mean-
Do we have a new agent yet?
I, I don't know, I would be, why don't we say level fund, and why don't we have the finance committee talk to him and see if he needs more? That's another item that, if he gets more people in, we have to spend it.
Unfortunately, I will, yes.
So, that's a state law, we get seventy-five percent of it back somewhere down the line.
And town planner, we're keeping him at the same hours?
Yeah, for right now.
Twelve hours, and we had ten hours.
We're waiting to get everything in total with, here's the job description and everything else, we have to send that to certain people.
Correct.
Forest Street submitted two budgets, one that would be level funded, one that was a cut.
When I put out the budget request, I put out for the town, to submit the two, but a lot of ones, I mean, it's salary, so I'm having to cut the salary.
Yeah.
And the expenses are so small, it's, you've cut a hundred dollars.
Let's do level fund and see if the, I see if the finance committee can find someplace else to cut.
That's how we were setting it up, is, is set up with the level funding, with step increases, with the actual increases.
Leave it to the finance committee to see if they can come up with a place.
And then see what we get to at the end.
Town accountant's level funded. Yeah, that would be fine with me. At least if it's no more than level funded, we can let it go, one second. If we can let it go to the finance committee. I would move we level fund, move to level fund the budgets that are in front of us, except for, except for step raises, which we have to do.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion, second, uh, Becky?
You should have building department budgeting here too, as well.
Hold on, I might have missed-
Building department? Well, there was step raise on that.
I think I said that, and we said, separate, okay?
He said step raise.
Separate is fine.
You talked about planning, but I don't think you touched on the building.
Building department's fine too, but it's step, just with step raise. And again, Dan, if anything else, I'm gonna have to justify to finance.
Park and rec was level funded, or was nothing filled out?
Level funded.
Yeah, they didn't say level funded, but on mine here, but I, I've heard that it was.
Numbers that are saying so, it's level funded.
Right, okay, I have a motion and a second for level funding with the exception of the, uh,
Step raise.
Selling inspector who has a step raise, a step increase coming.
Well, actually, I have the step increases.
You do too? Okay. All right, I have a motion, second, any discussion? Harry Nunnall, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay. All right, you have anything else, Lorena?
I do not.
Mr. Delansky, I know you don't wanna talk, but I have some. Have you had a chance to talk to our treasurer about the, uh, our trade school increase for the roof there?
No, I will talk-
We need to settle that, because we need to, it's still an article, I think.
We mentioned a little bit of it at the Capitol Planning Committee, if I remember right. And, uh, I don't think he was too concerned about it, but I will talk to him, I'll give him a call, I just think I'll meet him.
Just two questions. We received your memo from the cable access to raise the fifty-three and a half cap. Now, finance committee, do they have to vote on that one too?
I don't think so, I think it's just the board of selectmen.
Just the board of selectmen, 'cause I know back in the day, board of health, we both had to vote, so I wasn't sure.
I'll check it out, I don't, we can have Lorena check it out. I don't think so, but we'll check it out.
All right, 'cause we didn't take any action yet, 'cause I wasn't sure.
And that's all, they can only spend it on that anyways.
Right, no, I understand that, but it-
We give them the authorization, these three said cap.
But she's saying, do it, just like when we do deficit spending, they have to vote on it too, so we can-
Oh, yeah.
Have Lorena check and see if we need vote. We'll let you know.
Okay.
I thought we voted on it.
We did.
Yeah, I thought we voted. I don't know what they voted on, I thought we did.
Um, and our other thing that we've been talking about is to invite you gentlemen to one of our meetings, once we, maybe in a week or so. Well, I know you, you said you were going away, so maybe when you come back.
Coming back at eleven, so.
Okay, so maybe after you come back, to come to one of our meetings to, just, by then we should have all the budgets in it and see what's-
That'll be fine.
We're serving refreshments.
I don't bring refreshments, we're never gonna have it on the first floor.
Waddle, Waddle's point. Okay, yeah, we got it too. All right, uh, anything else?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Next meeting day, next meeting-
Next meeting day will be the, uh, February-
February eleventh.
Uh, March.
Eleven, February, March, right.
Day of March.
Yep.
Seven PM, we have nothing else scheduled?
Nope.
Okay, March eleventh at seven PM, Bob, wish you a nice trip, I hope you had, enjoy some warm weather.
Thank you.
Calm weather, and, right back. Stay down there.
Thank you.
Okay, Manny, Jern?
Did you ever, did you ever see FaceTime?
Yeah.
You know, you open up, you open up a laptop like this, and on FaceTime, and I sit there and watch all the things, you can talk, I can stay up.
Hey, where, Jern?
Start, you think I'm going?
Is it stress related?
Are they our police department still out there? Are they our police department still out there?
Were you on the chief? I think I said chief.